Alright, meetings called to order. The Runnymede Board of Education workshop, work session is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Beryl Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Line Bingham School, Gray's Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Roll call, board members please.
Ms. Dare, Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Stevie.
Here.
Mr. Buckland.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrey. Ms. Schumpert-Liasso.
He's running late for work, he will be here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Baldwin.
Here.
Yeah, of course.
Alright, so at this time, I believe we're gonna start off with school budget presentation.
Correct. We have everyone set time of year again. School budget time, yes, for the 15, 16. As of right now, state aid was actually released today. The governor's message, budget message was given yesterday after noon, two o'clock. And then usually stated numbers are released two days after, they were released today. State aid seems to be exactly the same as it was last year. The only increase that we will be seeing is under school choice due to three additional students that we'll be getting funding for. Right now, we are at our max for the number of students that we're able to have for school choice, which is 11 students.
So when you say three more, they've approved the, like, or we are able to take the three additional?
We're always able, you're able to take additional whether or not you're getting paid.
That's what I'm talking about, right.
Exactly. So we are getting paid for the full 11 students that we have for next year.
But the three additional, you will, or you don't?
Well, we're getting paid for 11 now. So, we're getting paid for all, all of the students that we have. As I just said, this is the tentative budget presentation. Of course, we'll have the public hearing, which will be happening in April. And that'll be during the April regular meeting, during the work session part, at six o'clock. So we have time between now and the time that everything is finally approved, presented to the public, that we're able to have discussions and look through the budget. Just so you have an idea of the budget development process, October 2014, this past October, as administrative team, we all met to identify what budget needs we had within the district and what processes we were going to be following in developing the budget for this year. Up till December, building principals and departments, I'd be myself, Fudge, Jeanette, Lori, worked with staff to identify needs for the 15, 16 school year and where we saw things going. In January, the principals had to get their budgets to myself and Mark for review, so that way we could start putting together the 15, 16 budget. In February, construct the budget to determine financial impact and whether or not it fits mandates and whether or not we would be able to fund the budget for next year with what we have. And then today is our tentative budget presentation. On March 20th, we must submit the budget, the tentative budget, to the county office for approval. And once it's approved by the county office, we can then have our public hearing. We will have our public hearing on April 29th. The time span that we're allowed to have the public hearing from is from April 24th, and that's every school in the state of New Jersey that has their Board of Education election in November. You must have the public hearing between April 24th through May 7th. So it just so happens that we have a Board of Education meeting in that time span of one week, so we're able to actually hold our public hearing on April 29th.
Which is our regularly scheduled board meeting.
Correct. So we're gonna, we will have the public hearing at six o'clock. Our work session will follow if time permits, and then we'll go into our regular board meeting at seven. Considerations for the budget development, school and district educational goals as always top on the priority list. Community support and feedback as far as what we should be doing within our schools and what types of programs we want to provide our students. Our current enrollment numbers, anticipated revenue, mandates that we have to meet from the state and federal government, and then of course upcoming costs and needs that we see. District goals, of course our top goals to improve instruction through reviewing data to revise the current curriculum to meet student needs. One thing that we discussed during our test court presentation was the mathematics curriculum and how much we needed to update our math curriculum in the K-6 area. So we're currently piloting, as you know, in using a new program. Teachers were able to look through four different programs, one was selected. We're now piloting it in two classes at each grade level for grades three, four, and six. And teachers are very happy with what they're seeing in the program, so of course that's a large cost in terms of implementing a new math curriculum for next year. We're increasing our one-to-one Chromebook initiative to include grades five through eight next year. And we will be maintaining our current technology that we already have, such as the iPad carts in all three buildings. We have Chromebook carts available in both, and we also have laptop carts available as well. In addition, ability for us to collaborate with our sending district to ensure continuity of instruction between our school and also the high school district, being algebra, and something we're looking more into for next year is also what intervention programs we have for our students and how we can help our students transition from sixth, seventh, eighth grade to the high school if they need support. So that way, we're offering a similar intervention model to help and support students as they transition over academically. And then also collaborating with others for shared services. Shared services would be local government, other local school districts. That could include food service with Black Forest Pipe, transportation, we use Witten's law, I wanna say, for busing, and they offer us fantastic rates. So anytime we're able to offer a shared service opportunity, that's always viewed highly upon, and we're helping each other out as local municipalities to do what's best for kids and be as cost effective as possible. Also, project management coming up, one of the big things we have are the fixes and updates that we're doing to our buildings with the roof, windows, and exterior updates for both, and then windows and exterior updates for Bingham and Downing as well. So project management, as we're working with South Jersey Technology Partnership, they'll help us in terms of managing those projects over the course of the summer, ensure that everything's done properly and effectively and legally. Enrollment and school choice. Our enrollment has stayed stable, and even looking back at last year's slide, and the Mr. Iñichi gives the enrollment count on a monthly basis, this is over the course of 12 months, the average. So even though he might be saying one month it's a 50, the average stat we have is 840 students that we have on a constant basis. So that hasn't changed, and we haven't really seen a huge change in our enrollment. As I was just stating for school choice, I apologize, two students. It was listed as three at first, but when I look back, it's two additional students that we have. But we are stopped at, we are staying at 11 students as our cap for school choice. At this point, school choice remains the same. The only way that that changes is if a student's taken for no money at all, at no cost, the following year they do get a school choice fund for them. What's in this budget? Increased technology and curriculum updates, updates to school facilities at all three schools, and of course maintaining educational extracurricular programs within the district. Revenues. If you look at revenues for the money coming in for the local tax levy, it will remain at the 2% cap, which means that there's no need for public vote because school districts across the state of New Jersey are able to increase the tax levy by 2%. Understanding the fact that in order to maintain your buildings, in order to maintain your educational programs, keeping it at 0% every year with 0% state funding, you're gonna be making cuts on a continuous basis, and that wouldn't be in the best interest of the educational program as a whole. In 1415, the revenue taken in was $6,762,600. This year, it's $6,897,852, a difference of $135,252. Revenues for 1415, you're gonna see a large difference between 1415 and 1516. That's because we're removing money from our capital reserves to move into capital projects. That's all of the large projects that are taking place, the roofing project, the windows, the exterior. What we do is each year, we have to store away money, so that way we can do updates to the buildings. The project's total value is of course over $3 million. Our local share that we have to pay because the school development authority is picking up a portion of that. We're only paying $1,493,409. Be nice if I was able to read numbers. So when you look at the total revenues from one year to the next, there's actually a decrease by $9,332 when you remove the ROD grants out of that actual number there. I speak very quickly, so stop me if you ask me to go back to any point. Okay, local tax, of course, there's the anticipated tax for 1516. It's $1, 1.378 per hundred dollars of assessed home value. So compared to last year, it's a $43 increase in taxes per hundred thousand dollars assessed evaluation that you have. So as an example, if the average home in Runnymede were $164,781, and that number was taken from city data that can be pulled up online, the elementary school tax per household would be $2,270.68, which is a $70, $70.85 average increase in elementary school tax for the 15, 16 school year. Next steps that we would be taking, Board of Education would, it's on the agenda this evening under Finance, to approve and adopt and file the tentative budget. That allows us to work with the county office, the county business administrator, the county superintendent. Just because I submit the budget doesn't mean it's not gonna get kicked back for revisions or that they're gonna see additional things added in. But we have until March 20th, 2015, to make that approval, which is why we're presenting it to you this evening, because our next meeting won't happen until after that date. Administration will work with the county office to submit for final approval. If any changes are needed, this can be reviewed, discussed at the March 25th Board of Ed meeting. April 24th, 2015 is the last day of the budget can be approved by the county superintendent. And then between April 24th and May 7th, all school districts who have their elections in November must have a public hearing, which is why we would be scheduling our public hearing for April 29th, the next board meeting that we have. In front of you for your review, as I said, this was a tentative budget, you have two different forms. The green form is every revenue coming in, so money coming in would be on green. I thought it was color appropriate. Money coming out would be on paper red, so there are money in, money out, you know.
And you use paper.
It hurts, it hurts, it hurt my soul.
There's a big la la coming from down there, a la la.
And it hurt my soul too, I used paper today, I had to do what I had to do, so.
The little things like. So this is the line items, especially for our new board members to see what 2000, what account, then we look at the paint sheet I'm looking at, then what we paid in 2013, 14 for that, then 1415, then 1516, and then the difference and the percentage, he broke it down for us. Then you see, you'll see like kindergarten, how much we're paying salary, you see that? Grades one to five, grade six to eight, you know, you can go there and see every single thing. This is line item by line item, especially because, you know, this is something that we like to hold on to, to this, because, you know, people ask us questions about, about this a lot, about the budget. And it's hard to understand, believe me, not everyone up here understands this, I mean, I always have questions myself, but this is, this is everything that you need to know, like how much we have budgeted. Correct, Sean?
Correct.
How much we have budgeted for each, for each, every, everything in the school. Every single expense is right. Well, I don't know, I don't, I don't, my husband's not an accountant, so my household budget doesn't look like this, maybe yours does.
Maybe you see that on a monthly basis.
I need a little bit of fill in my life, but no, so if you have any questions, this is, this is something, this is something to hold on to. Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. McCarron about the presentation? Dr. McCarron, does Mr. Connor have a copy of this? Can we make sure it's emailed so he can have it up on his, or an electronic copy would probably be easier for him to get up on his blog? Anything, anything else? Anybody have any questions? Either you came in, you just looked in the folder, give you a minute or two before we move on.
I don't want to take yours.
Well, I'd break that off some more.
There's anyone on the table?
I'll ask later.
You'll ask later?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, we can move on if everyone wants to get up the agenda for this evening's meeting. We will, is there another presentation during this time?
There is.
Go ahead.
That presentation will have to end towards the end of the work session around 6:45.
About 6:45 they're coming? Okay.
And then we have a presentation, cheerleaders, as well as Camden County Education Services, Ms. Delvecchio will be here, about five minutes, it's a quick presentation.
Okay.
He was trying to, Delmar, then driving down the flight and coming to us, just to explain some of the things they would know.
Sure, that's great.
That's good. And our cheerleaders will be reporting for us.
Okay.
Why we're here and the configurations.
Set up for our girls, that's good, sounds good.
Little bit of math words.
Hi, Mrs. Jazzy, I was gonna start going through the agenda.
Okay.
Because Mr. Iñichi said that the teachers will present toward around 6:45, do they need some time?
They're ready.
Or do you, would you rather them go now, so they don't, so they can leave?
Yes, Kevin, you just have to put it up to your, okay.
Okay, you can take your time, Mr. Michelle.
Alright, thanks.
Um, we're having technical difficulties anyway, so.
Is it dirty?
It says, but I was thinking, real dirty, is it? Yeah, yeah. Well, I just had a dirty, I was, did we, did we, did we?
Yeah.
Just a little.
And it's, 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 it's. Oh, okay. I'm like, you're excited.
And it's, I need my, I need my shirt, so.
I'm wearing a white shirt tomorrow. I'm watching video, I'm in the classroom.
I think you buy a, I was buying for hours for mine, I was like, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
I just, I just.
I'm talking to screen, I'm, I'm.
I don't, I don't.
Oh, okay.
This is damn, you want a copy? Thank you, Mr. McCarron. I'll give you a, I'll give a copy of the, uh.
Sorry, Maria.
No, no, why, I'm sorry.
Mr. Connor, we will also make sure that he counts, you all right, please?
But this way he has, you know, a concrete tool to look at. Do you need questions?
Can I walk the front desk? I think I already am.
We'll, we'll have time before the regular meeting starts.
Or I could just, sign like just something, if you can't say. Blow it off there.
I don't need, I didn't, I told her.
She's got the zoom in the car.
I was calling my dad.
She can blow it off.
I know. That's why she's, yeah, we know, she did them.
I remember that. I'll figure it out.
I was up until 11:35. What are you doing?
From behind when it's, it's.
This is.
Oh. I'm around, I'm here. I know, you don't want to. I'm over.
How long is the other video? I wonder.
Uh, it's called.
Whoa. I mean, that's, that's, I'm being poor, Connor. Yes. He has a special screen.
Yeah, I'm glad it was the first one.
His, his very special screen.
Thanks, guys.
I mean, I, whatever.
I feel like it's from monkey.
Sorry, that's not mine.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm a cat.
Yeah, it's like, it's gonna be like seven.
Board members, so these are the third grade teachers. If you guys wanna introduce ourselves, just so we can make face with the name, please.
Alright, I'm Kevin Michelle, I'm third grade at Downing.
I'm Lindsay Lamonica, I'm third grade at Bingham, inclusion.
I'm Robin Clark, I'm Lindsay's partner in inclusion in third grade over Bingham.
I'm Maureen Duffy, I'm doing maternity leave in third grade for this semester at the only.
So we kinda just have a presentation, it's about integrating technology and the parent teacher kinda communication. We kinda hit on both topics. First is kinda the academics. We, Bingham, Robin and I use Envision's Math. It's a new math program that we're kinda piloting. We really enjoy it, it integrates technology and the parent-school communication aspect because the kids can take, in school, they can take the test online, they all have codes, they all know their login codes by heart now. The website is accessible at home as well. So they can take their test online, in school, if we have time, they can watch additional practice videos, which are just like little videos and it kind of reviews the topic that they got wrong on the test. And then if we want, we can reassign them the test and they can kinda find the average between the two test scores.
Parents can also do that as well, they can log in home, they can see the exact test, they can see what they got right, what they got wrong, they can see the videos that will help them to, you know, to review the skills that they missed and the questions that they missed, so it's really nice that they can log in, they can see their percentage, they can see how they've been doing, they can see their growth just by logging in, and they, again, they have their own logins. So we can modify the test as well, so we can go in, I haven't, we're kinda learning as we're going, but we can modify the test and change it. For example, maybe there's four possible choices, we can make it two or three if we have a student who that's just too much, you know, if they have like an IP or something and they have the ability to modify it. So it's really, it's really individualized and really, and they love it, I mean, they're like, what, are we doing math yet? Are we doing math yet? They, they're enjoying it and it's based on the course standards, so.
And it's also really good because it has a student textbook online, so if a student is absent, we have the links to the, on our website, we can show you that a couple slides ahead, but if a student is absent and, you know, they wanna go above and beyond, they can log on at home using their login that they know already, they can find the textbook, they can watch the videos, they can see the visualization, it spells it all out for them, they can practice at home. There's also like an answer key, so if the mom wants to check it, like they can go in and it's all like at home for them to use. And that's like the biggest kind of parent-school new thing we have in our classroom.
Something we use across the third grade on between Bingham and Downing is Class Dojo. And what it is, it's a, it's a website and application, and it really connects parents to us and us to parents. And it also gets these students involved as well, because they can log on at home and see their behavior logs throughout the day. So it really utilizes this point system of positive and negative points that we can give throughout the day. And what's nice is that it interacts with our smart boards, our Promethean boards, all we have to do is click it, it creates a sound, and it's kind of like conditioning for them in a way to do the positive behavior. There's sounds for positive behavior, sounds for negative behavior, so they're starting to pick on, on which one is happening. So we just have a short video for you of how it works for home and school.
Hey, welcome to Class Dojo. Class Dojo is a tool that makes your classroom more fun, and it helps you become a better student, too. Your teacher will set up Class Dojo and make a list of actions to try to do this year, like participating, helping others, and staying on task. When your teacher notices that you're doing these actions, you'll receive dojo points. And at the end of the day, you can find out how you've done. You can see what you're doing well and also learn where you need improvement. The best part is this, you get your very own avatar. We'll give you one to start with, but you can make your own avatar once your teacher gives you your secret code. Log in at home using your secret code and you'll be able to make your own avatar, see how you did in class, and see all your friends, too. We hope you love using Class Dojo, like millions of students all around the world do. Now, your teacher will tell you more about how you're going to use Class Dojo in your classroom. Have fun.
It's great, as you can see, it's, it's.
Don't you wanna join class? If you don't play in class, you all get a positive point for being here.
I feel like Oprah sometimes, we're like, you get a dojo, you get a dojo, we're just like ripping them out, but that's a positive thing to give a dojo, and it's definitely rewarding that positive behavior, so.
And then, I don't know if it's on the, so if a parent logs on at home, they all have access codes, so if a parent goes on at home, they can see, you know, TJ had a 77% positive day. What was he doing that was, that needs work? Well, he was talking, he was off task, he was not following directions. And we actually had this where, you know, someone was being a bucket dipper, so we put that up on the board, and then a parent messaged us and said, like, can you explain to me why my child was being a bucket dipper? And from right, it wasn't a huge deal, but for the parent, she was able to just see it right away. A babysitter usually picks the child up from school, so we don't have that conversation with her all the time, so she was able to just look at it. I typed a little message back, because as you can see, you can message the parents right through here. You know, they can see exactly what time, so maybe if somebody's off task a lot in the morning, maybe it's because, you know, they didn't eat breakfast that day, and that can start a conversation between at home and school. Or if it's around like the end of the day, maybe, you know, something happened at lunch and it continues to happen, we can kinda see that progress, and it tracks it every day.
And it actually has the time update that it happened, so you can say who's off task, talking here, but working hard, speak appropriately, speaking, and I love how it itemizes what it is they did. And they know, they go up and they, if they go to give themselves a dojo, they hit positive, and then there's that selection, and they pick, and they'll look and they'll say, uh, working hard, or I'm on task, and they know, and so they know this is what they're working for. And they know what they're, yes.
Is that done daily or weekly?
Yes, it's up on the, it's up on our smart board or our computer or iPads, all times. And then their points kind of build up, so I have one student, we started in February with it, and they, she has about 70 points now. At the end of the month, she'll be able to maybe cash those points in for like the teacher's chair, a little prize that we have in the class. But you can see all month, and then kids can set like personal goals, whether it's, you know, I wanna get 100 points this month, or you can change, so this one says like this week, so this means he had a 77, 77% positive week. You can change it to day, you can change it to month, and then they can see kind of the variations as the month or day goes on. Yeah, we can log on too, but we'll get through, well, do you wanna get through it first?
Let's jump first.
Okay.
Let's see.
It's really good because it's very quick, too, you don't, like, I don't have to single a kid out and say, give yourself a dojo, take a dojo away. I can just go up and as you start walking to the board, they're all like, oh gosh, what's happening? Like, is it me? Am I doing something right? Like, if I'm not, I better like get myself together. And like, you'll, like, they'll say, you know, is it, is it positive? Like, if I get up there and, you know, Ms. Lamonica rewards someone for being off task and I'm off task, I'm gonna get one taken away too, so it's like, I better get back up there, get myself together.
And what's also helpful is that I'm usually at the back table in the morning, trying to collect papers and homework, so I usually have this up on the board right when they come in. And what's nice is that you can mark them all absent, and then as they come in, they can mark, sign themselves in, and I can basically see who's visually here, who's not here, and take attendance on real time from the back table on the iPads, and really visually see who's here, who's not here, who's not in yet, and it's nice to have too for that reason.
And it's not just visual, it's definitely auditory, 'cause it goes ding if they get a positive, and it goes wong, if they get a negative, and that's not a sound you don't wanna hear, so it's, it really does kinda just hit on their senses.
Yeah, I can, I can give them the example of the.
Who are you gonna get a point for?
Well.
And they will notice, they count their dojos.
Yeah, they do. I'll just like.
And if you give it to like the whole class, they'll be like, someone wasn't here yesterday, how come they gotta do a job?
Well, and one of the good things is also you can customize this to your own needs, like, so for Kevin, he has these certain things such as bucket filling, cleaning up, whereas I have different. Like, so for Kevin, he has these certain things such as bucket filling, cleaning up, whereas I have different ones, you know, helping the teacher, helping another teacher, so you can go in and individualize it.
And those are also needs work on different things, and you can create the point values depending on, you know, how severe you think they are. So I'll just give them, I'll give them a couple things. So give them points and they'll hear that sound from what they get. There's also a negative sound, so they can hear that as well. And what we do is, like Lindsay was saying, we do incentives in the class, each of us do it a different way. I know Maureen does the punch cards in her room and I do, after 50 points for each student, they can earn a dojo dollar. And I have different point values in my room for what they can earn, so this is up for them to see. So one dojo dollar, I collect tickets and they can earn a prize through prize box, do a couple different things. No shoes, jump to the front of line, depending on how many they earn, so.
That's how I felt at the end of today. With my punch cards, I mean, every day they get a punch for positive behavior the day before, so they're, once they fill up their whole card, they're working towards a big prize, such as like a classroom party, like a little piece of coffee or something.
Car.
Yeah, car.
Sure, another one that we go, we use, it's kind of again just communication between parents and teachers, is Remind text alerts. Again, you can also do this through Class Dojo. Class Dojo kind of encompasses all of this, but you can send out kind of text message alerts to the parents, whether it's a specific parent or parents altogether. Everyone has their phones on them all the time, no one's really, you know, checking their kid's behavior log every day, but if I'm going to text you and say, like, your kid was great today, or you know, Johnny forgot his homework, I'm more likely to get a response via either the Class Dojo messenger or the Remind text alerts. And this is just a way in our, you know, dating, everyone has this on them, whether it's in their pockets, in their hands, in their purse, they have it more likely to check that their kid's binder.
Just so you know, in case you don't know, the parents cannot respond to the text message, so this is a nice way for the teachers to be able to text message the parents. We use it for our students, that's how I can text my students without violating our social, our policies, our communication policies.
And they don't see our cell phone number.
Right.
There's a generic number that comes up and
It's a, it's a great app.
What we also use together as a team every week, we do use Google Drive. And my students are starting to use their own Google accounts in third grade. So what we use it for, we can upload homework on there, upload newsletters, schedules. We can also do lesson plans and actually collaborate on them together at the same time. It's kind of like having a Word document on the computer and everyone being able to jump on at the same time and edit different things. So it's kind of nice to collaborate. And I know the students in my room are using Google Drive to share and peer edit with each other because they can allow another student to edit their work online on the computer at their convenience.
And it's really nice because they can do it from any computer. So if you log in with your Google account, I can bring it up whether I'm in school, whether I'm at home. I can continue to work on the same project no matter where I am. I just save it on the Google Drive. It helps us in class because we don't have that many computers, so it's like first come, first served. So if you are working on a, the first computer and the next day someone else is working on the first computer, you can just open up whatever you have on whatever computer is available and you can continue to edit your work, continue to work on it at home, at school, wherever, wherever you are.
And another reason why I prefer this better than Microsoft Word is because it saves the work for them. They don't have to continuously push the save button at the end, so whatever work they have and whatever document they made, it saves it for them whether they log out or someone else logs them out. So they don't lose their work every time that they log on or someone else logs on the computer.
And you can also see the work that was done that day, and so we use it during daily five. So if a child is, I was typing all daily five, really because you typed five words? Or really because you typed three pages, like great job, like I can see exactly on what day and at what time you completed that work.
And they can share that document right with us and we can see it right through our own Google Drive account, so.
And they love it. We have a student who finds writing so laborious and one day he was on the computer and he was like, look, I'm on word 256. And we were like, what? This is the same child who, you know, we're pulling teeth to get to write. So for them sometimes it's just, it gives them the liberty just to be able to pick up and go on.
What we also use is Google Sites, we use a lot of Google tools throughout our day. But what we use this for is for homework, news, educational sites. I'll quickly show you mine, Lindsay, you want to show them yours? Here's my third grade site, so what I do here is I, I provide them different dates on here. It's almost like in place of a newsletter, it's kind of like a digital newsletter. So I kind of give them updates on what we're doing in the classroom, on our webpage, and if we're using Google Classroom. And what I like about this webpage is that I can post homework assignments online. And this is also through the Run A Meet site, they can access it, I post the homework for the week. And at the bottom, if they're missing their homework or forget them in school, they can just click the one that they need and it comes up where they can print it home or print from the library, whatever they need. So there's almost no excuse not to have your homework now, so.
Except like we won't have it or something.
Yeah. Unless you don't have it in order, yeah.
So this is Mrs. Clarkson, and mine, mine, whatever. Ours is also on here, we have, you know, all the information, something, we have our homework, the homework helpers on there. That's the link to the math that we have, and then all the math pages you hear and their spelling. So depending on whatever unit we're on, topic we're on. We also have an event calendar, so we have all the kids' star student weeks in here, so parents can kind of look ahead, see when book club is, see when, you know, the craft sale is, see when their child is star student, if they want to plan ahead or if, you know, Johnny happens to forget that he's a star student, we told him in September, he can always look on here, or he lost his paper, whatever, it's all on here. So we have some kids that are very forgetful, so parents are using this as a really good resource because they don't have to rely on their eight-year-old to remember when the pretzel sale is because it's on.
And if their child is absent, they can just retrieve the, with the Envisions, what they can do is they can find out what the lesson they missed, they can watch the video on it, and they can do the homework, they can pull it up, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the teachers, for Bingham teachers, because Downing is not using Envision, just Bingham is. What are your thoughts on Envision versus Everyday Math?
I like it, I think that it is very, like the topics are laid out very well for the kids and it's mastery of each topic. So it really goes into, like multiplication was 18 lessons itself, and then it was multiplication and division for another like eight lessons or something along those lines. Whereas Everyday Math was, last year was my first time using it, and I felt like they didn't have a concrete grasp on multiplication. And that's like something really big in third grade for them.
Yeah, I mean, I liked Everyday Math because I, I think I had worked with it long enough that I felt like I probably filled in gaps where there were some missing perhaps. The way Everyday Math worked is it was a spiral, so you know, you might introduce multiplication and something, 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 and then you come back to multiplication again, so you know, the whole concept was you hit it, you forget it, you hit it, you forget it, comes back again. Whereas yeah, this is to mastery, so when you do multiplication, you know multiplication before you run on to the next day. My one concern at this point is we, we were piloting it, so we didn't start until mid-October. We're starting like, you know, standardized testing and that sort of thing, and they haven't gotten to, in, in the series, you know, there's no fractions yet, there's no geometry, there's no, you know, that sort of thing. So they're great on addition, subtraction, multiplication. So I'm not sure yet how I feel because I haven't seen that all the way through. As anything else, when it's new, it's more work, it's more, you know, it's reaching out. Now that I feel like we have it set up and I, the kids, I mean, the kids love it, so.
So it would be probably more beneficial next year if you start from the, the beginning of the year, so you won't have that lapse in time.
And, and with anything, the more you use it, the more comfortable you know, you know, you kind of
And it is really easy to, being in the inclusion class, it's very easy to differentiate Envisions. Because the way it's set up, it's kind of like, this is the independent time, this is, you know, the, or the guided time that you do with the teacher, this is the independent time, this is like the problem-solving time. So you can kind of see the students that are just able to get a grasp on that guided time with the teacher in our small group math, those that are just able to kind of start to master the independent, and then those that are able to go above and beyond. There's also for the homework, I don't know if it'll be easy to bring up, but this is, this is one of the homeworks. So the way, the way it's, I don't know if I can do that, there you go. The way it's set up is
I don't know what this is over here.
I can just scroll.
What would you like them to say? Here, we go. Oh no, do the same thing.
Okay, so the way this is set up is it kind of explains it all at the top, it's really helpful to parents too. If we have students that are having, yeah, are having difficulty with the math concept, we may give them the reteaching homework. Whereas if there's a child who seems to really understand it, they may have homework with a couple more problems. There's also another level, we don't have it up for homework because we kind of just give that in class, and that's enrichment. That's kind of taking what they're learning in class and then applying it and pulling in concepts that they've talked about before and then applying it to like real-world situations, newspaper articles or maps or things like that.
And it comes with a little video each morning, it's like, or you know, it's a little video clip that's just kind of cute and fun and little
We dance every day.
We dance.
No, we just wanted to know your personal opinions just because we, you know, we approve these things, but we don't really ever, usually sometimes get, besides, we just don't get feedback from the teacher, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, the kids love math and what I like is in the inclusion classroom, I'm seeing especially, because that's where I am, but kids with special needs are able to grasp it and they feel good and they're, they're taking ownership of it. So at this point, yes, I like it.
So if, when, with, can you see what parents have logged on to go onto this?
No.
I can't tell.
You can't.
No, we can't tell who's logged on to the math program. If we were to reassign it and have the child redo it and have the child watch the videos again, then yes, because a little check comes up next to like watched it, watched it, watched it. But as far as like their login, we can't account for all their logins then.
So with the, with the Class Dojo though, you can see who logged on?
Yes, yes, we get a, I don't know if it's still on.
No, you don't have to go back.
So yeah, we can see, like I think I have, out of the 20 parents in my class, I have, I want to say like 10 or 11 that are logged on. Some parents I correspond back and forth with, because like I said, there is a messenger app on there. And yeah, so I can see all the parents that log in, I can see the kids love it because they can log in at home and change their dojos. And then they come in the next day and they're like, oh, I logged in, I logged in. And each kid gets a specific code for their dojo, for their fake, so they can't see anybody else's. They can only see like, oh, my friend is on, or like my friend changed their dojo, but they can't like mess around with it.
So you have like roughly half the class's parents participate in dojo?
Mm-hmm, yes. And I would say that it's that way across the board, like you'll see we have on Instagram, we have another, we have remind one, the Remind Text and Insta, and the Class Dojo. And I would say we have about 12 or 10 collectively like parents that are on all the accounts.
So that's about 50%.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it comes up with a timestamp on Class Dojo if they've read, it gives a little check mark here and it says read at what time. So we can see whether they got it or not.
And on all of our newsletters, we constantly have that on there too, like, don't forget to sign up for Remind 101. It's also on our websites, our website page is always on our newsletter and the first thing you see when you bring up our website page is, don't forget to sign up for Instagram, don't forget to sign up for Remind 101, like, follow us, look what we're doing and all this kind of stuff.
And this also gives us the parent login of when they've checked Class Dojo, so I could see right up at the top, 2:25 was their last login, it goes all the way down on who was in last, so I can see whether they've checked it daily or not.
Any other questions for our third graders? On behalf of the board, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Alright, so at this time, we will go quickly through the agenda, the meeting agenda. So we have the secretary's report, superintendent's report, principals, nurses, special education and building and grounds report. Do anyone have any specific questions on any of those reports? Angel? Did you have to say that one?
Yep, I'm good.
Sorry, so then we'll go to property and transportation, I know there's three items there, it looks self-explanatory. Facility use, field trips. We needed, we needed a bus to some playoff games, any questions there? No?
How about the bus we ordered, I know we had a conversation about, I thought it'd be coming in?
Sure, it'll be coming in tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Wow. The bus was And you'll see that you have on your agenda tonight, under personnel, approval of driver.
Alright, so under personnel, there's three items, self-explanatory again, any questions there?
So what category is personnel under?
D.
Are you on the agenda?
I'm on the I-type, what? Okay, thank you, I got it. I love it, thank you.
Are you good?
Good.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Because I think this came up when we designed the course. Do we have a possible backup bus driver in case this person was ill the day the bus needed to be used?
Couple of options.
Do we?
Employees, we are going to send back and get their
Excuse me, Mr. McCarron, we're also having problems loading, loading this agenda.
Do you have a paper copy or no?
I can share the paper copy, yes. But all the reports, the reports are not coming up. This is, it says there is problems loading more pages.
Okay, I'm going to move along to finance. Student development, payment of bills, there's some tuition contracts.
Tuition, there's money coming in, not money going out.
Finally. No, I mean, I'm just going to keep moving on though for the sake of time, okay? Under curriculum, there's home instruction, practical students, approval for a, course approval for a teacher, any questions there? You guys all good, are you following me? I'm, you're quiet.
We're following.
Okay, alright, good. Thank you, and then policy, policy and public relations, we have a fundraiser, donor choose project, and a donation that we have to accept. Any questions on the agenda?
Accepting donations is something new that you might not have seen in previous agendas. Whenever we receive a donation from an outside source, we do need to accept it as a board of education that we are receiving it. So anything that goes out that way.
So if there isn't any questions, we'll miss it there, need someone to run out and grab her glasses and
Oh, no, she's loading it up now.
Are you good, loading it up? Alright.
2015. Where's the, where's the donation, what page is that on?
It's, it's
Under E. It's D. I mean, E, sorry.
Look, right here, right here.
One, two, and three.
You got it, if you can't see, you can go like this, you can see it better.
Blows up.
Right here. Any other questions? I'm going to, um What? Oh, okay. If you don't mind, you can present now, Mr. Del Vecchio.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, alright. Mr. Del Vecchio is here from the Camden County Education Services Commission.
Rather than put my back to some people
Welcome, that's fine.
Thank you for, Mr. Anucci, Dr. McCarron, thanks for impacting me and Board of Education as well. My board has asked me to build our brand awareness because we're sort of a little secret in the county. If you ask anyone outside of a school who we are and what we do, most people don't know. In fact, if you ask most people in a school, except for the district administrator and the superintendent and anybody that handles transportation, they don't know what we do. But we are a, an LEA, we're a local education agency, the difference is we don't operate a school, but we are a county resource for shared services. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the governance that we have because it is important to you. We have a representative assembly as opposed to a board of education, and that's made up of one And that's made up of one representative, either a board member or a superintendent from each school district, each, each public school district in Camden County. Uh, your last representative was Ms. Panzarella. I'm not sure if you, did you reorganize in January?
Yes.
Did you name a new representative? Has that, who is that representative?
Representative was selected as, was it here?
I think maybe me. I was...
Okay, uh, the reason why I ask that...
But now that I, now that I found out we could be our superintendent, that may be changed.
Yeah, let me just say that most superintendents don't do it.
We like to be original.
Okay, I'm sorry. Most superintendents don't do it. The reason why that's important is, uh, as our representative assembly members, you're not required to attend board meetings with two exceptions. In March, we vote on our budget and in June, we reorganize. So we need a quorum of thirty-eight members. So we need nineteen or twenty members uh, to have a quorum. And we don't have to have you on site. You can call in. We send out an email. We send out, in fact, I probably should get your email. If you haven't gotten an email from us, then that means we haven't been updated.
I checked the email today for my, so I have not.
You can write down your name and email address. Tomorrow, you will have an email with the budget uh, that's going out and um, and the instructions to call in. That, that's really important for us because if we don't get that quorum, then we can't pass our budget. And of course, you know what that means.
I served before, I know all of that here.
Okay, so, that, out of the thirty-eight representative assembly members, then there is a vote by those members for a board of directors. So our board of directors functions much like your board of education. They are the voting members of the board. And they come to meetings every month and they vote on the same issues that you vote on, with the exception of, we don't have student issues. Um, but we have related issues. So that's our, our governance and uh, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, our mission is actually very simple. Our mission is to support you in the advancement of your mission. So you have academic and programmatic needs and you have to fulfill them. Our job is to help you fulfill them with cost-effective shared services. So I'll use the best example that I can use when I talk about our programs. Although based on your agenda, it looks like you're doing a pretty good job on your own with most of that stuff. Uh, but what we're most known for is transportation. So just to put it in perspective, we transport over ten thousand students a day to all districts in Camden County. And that can be as simple as one student from one district on a bus going to a private school for the disabled. Or at the other extreme, we transport every single student in Camden City to uh, for out of district, in district, bilingual, homeless, um, et cetera, et cetera. So we, uh, we're pretty good at transportation. Uh, we do charge a fee for that and um, but some school districts do their intrud district or their uh, basketball games and sporting events. They do that on their own. What they look to us for is door-to-door for special education, uh, pickup and for private school. So where, where you benefit from a shared service arrangement is, if you have one student going to, let's say Yale in Medford, that might cost you three hundred dollars a day. It's as much as the tuition sometimes. If it's, if there's only one student on the bus. If we pick up six students along the way and take them all to Yale, you pay one-sixth for whatever the number of students you have on that bus, apportioned equally across that population. So that's where we save money. So while that doesn't sound like a lot, uh, maybe to some, our budget is thirty-two million dollars a year. We're the uh, sixteenth largest school district in the county and twenty-two and twenty-three million of that is transportation. So we move a lot of students and we do it really well. Um, again, we work with districts. Some districts, we do inter, intra and all different forms of transportation. Uh, also, uh, our next largest service is what's known as Public Law one ninety-two, one ninety-three. Those are services to the non-public schools. You do have a non-public school in your, uh, in your area, that's St. Teresa's. So we do transportation for those students if needed. We do uh, educational services. We do both compensatory education and supplemental instruction. So in nineteen seventy-seven, the state of New Jersey passed the Public Law one ninety-two, one ninety-three, which the statutory intent was that all students who should be able to meet their academic uh, capacity. In order to do that, some students fall below a certain percentile in standardized tests. If a student takes a standardized test in a non-public school, falls below the fortieth percentile, they are eligible for services. If a student in a non-public school is suspected of a disability, they are referred the same way your students are referred and they are found eligible for services, but they don't get an IEP, they get an ISP, an individual service plan. And that service plan is slightly different than an IEP, but we are the implementers of that plan. So we evaluate the students on behalf of the public school. Because ultimately, it's your responsibility to do this. You contract us to do that for you because you don't wanna send teachers back and forth, you don't wanna have to worry about speech therapists and all those things. We have fifty or fifty-five teachers and speech therapists on staff that we put exclusively in the non-public schools serving those children. And we also have instructional assistants that's fun, that are funded by IDEA. And we also do Title I uh, services under uh, public law as well. And in addition to that, home instruction and other things. So that's the Public Law one ninety-two, one ninety-three. The other area of service that we do are child study team services. For the public schools, we do fulfillment or uh, overflow work. So if your staff doesn't work through the summer, but you have a referral and you need to do an evaluation, you might bring that staff member in. If they're not available, you would call us if you wanted to. You could do it any way you'd like. We're just one of many providers. Um, we would provide that professional do the testing, attend the meeting, et cetera, et cetera. We do that for many public schools. Um, and we do all of the non-public evaluations in Camden County. So you might be surprised to know that we do over a thousand evaluations a year. So that's pretty substantial uh, compared to a small district and a child study team with maybe fifty or sixty or seventy students. Um, so uh, in addition to that, there's one other service that we do. Uh, we are the local education agency contracted by Gloucester Township to provide the educational uh, programming for any young adult who is uh, a resident at the juvenile detention center in Blackwood. Uh, those students are entitled to an education. Wherever that facility resides, that school district is responsible for uh, for the delivery of instruction. They contract that to us for a fee. Um, we are actually funded through the county of Camden. And you should also know that all of the services that I've just described, none of those take local taxpayer funds. It is either state or federal funding. So uh, none of your local money comes out of these services. There are some services that we're looking at doing that may come out of your local funding, but it's things that you would normally do anyway. So for example, uh, where we think we're going, we're still working out some of the details and it might be the next school year by the time we get it all worked out. But we think there's an opportunity to provide substitute teachers at a more competitive rate because we're a nonprofit uh, compared to the companies that are out there doing it now who are for-profit companies. So we think there are some opportunities for that as well, that school districts can save money but get the same quality of services. What you should know is, we're partnering with Rowan and Rutgers to work with their teacher preparation program students uh, for instructional aid positions and also for their graduates. Unfortunately, not everybody gets a job when they come out of school, but most of those graduates will look for public school opportunities uh, as substitute teachers. And as has been my experience and I'm sure yours, you get a good substitute teacher, you have a position open somewhere down the road, you'll like to keep them because they're good. Uh, so that's what we're doing. That's where we're heading. And uh, unless there's any questions, I am done and I appreciate the opportunity to commit.
Thank you. Um, so at this time, I would like to adjourn the work session. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the work session.
Motion made by uh, Nick, um, Maria, seconded by Chad. All in favor?
Aye.